To order on Monday, July 16th at 7:00 PM. And would you join me in a flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We, I don't see any additions to the agenda. Under roll call and staff introductions, we have the whole staff except Mr. Fleishman here, our planning director. Two counselors are absent, Mr. Uselman and Mr. Cronquist. And so, you say without, oh, here comes, here comes Dan now.
Your core is on her way.
She's on her way, okay. So, we have any, no additions, any declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias, et cetera? And with that, I think we'll go, we can go to comments from the public at this time. And if our other counselor, or when she gets here, we'll go on to regular business. So, let's see. Samantha, how would you like to be first? Samantha Jones, up there, please. And tell us where you live.
I live in Lyons, but I work in Stateon.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I work at Mick and Moms, and we've just become aware of in the April meeting.
Samantha, can you put the microphone down?
Yeah.
Do I really have to?
That's better.
Yes. Okay. We've just become aware of, in the April meeting, about an amendment that was made under Title VIII, Health and Safety, and a small section of town, but a viable section of town and businesses have been affected by this. I work at Mick and Moms, and I'm here on behalf of Mick and Moms. Mick and Moms is a pub and eatery where our clientele are no longer legally allowed to walk out in front of our bar and smoke a cigarette. No longer are they legally allowed to do that at Rumors. No longer are they legally allowed to do that at the Red Apple. And, you know, that hurts our business. I understand the no smoking inside of a building because that's an enclosed space and could affect people's house. But we're talking about a small-town city street where people can no longer do that. And from what I'm to understand, correct me if I'm wrong, this is finable. You can get a ticket for standing outside of Mick and Moms and just having a cigarette with your buddies. I don't, I don't understand the thinking process, and in no way am I condemning the marijuana store that you've, that you guys have allowed to open next door to our business. But now you're saying to our business that our customers, their only options are to walk outside in the back of our building and smoke a cigarette next to the trash cans and the gas lines. That doesn't make any sense to me at all, and it hurts our business. And I thought the purpose of this committee here was to bring viable businesses to downtown Stateon, not just one small area on this map where you're actually hurting three viable businesses. And I spoke with the lady, and in no way representing Trask's, but I spoke with the wife today, and she said one of the reasons why she picked Stateon is because it's a small-town, kind, loving community. She stands outside, and her husband, and the children who actually helped them operate the business, and the children vape, but that's no longer legal in front of their store. They're no longer allowed to do that. So, her comment was, what do I have to do? Sell my business, my building, and move on the outskirts of town so I can live like I want to live? That's, that's not what a small-town community is about, at least not, I don't think so. And I don't think other people think so either. So, what I'd like to do is, if it's possible, to have it put back on the ballot for a revote.
Okay. Is there a motion?
A revote where the community's involved, and you actually get to see the faces of the people that you're telling they can no longer smoke a cigarette in a small section of town.
Keith, what, what would we have to do to do a, rethink that? If gathering signatures, put it on the November ballot, or what?
I would have to look into what you could do. I think there's two different kinds of potential elections. You could do a referendum or initiative, and what the criteria for that would be, I'm sorry, I haven't looked up, or I'm not familiar with right off the top of my head.
But there is a way.
There would be a way, potentially through Marion County, to do, to do that, to collect signatures and put it to a vote. But we could look into what that would take and requirements that would be, and to talk with Marion County Elections to.
Okay, let's do that, all right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can I ask, were any of the business owners that are here tonight ever contacted by FOTS about this ordinance prior to it being enacted? So, FOTS came to us and told us that they had been to every business owner downtown to explain to you all what their plan was for revitalization for downtown. So, are you all aware that, I think it's this month, in relation to that ordinance that you're speaking on, the non-smoking is also an ordinance to make sure that every building that's not lit on your marquee outside now has to be lit. So, they ought to be an investment to go and put the lights upside and make sure they're on every night.
May I say something?
Sure.
Our awning is lit up every night, our sign is lit up every night. But I'm, I'm not here saying anything about that.
Got you. I just want to make sure that their recommendation to us, or their address to us, was that they had spoken to every business owner downtown.
No, sir. My business owner, Yi Wu, was not made aware of it.
Just asking.
Neither was Trask's.
So, currently, does the individuals that smoke outside your building smoke 10 feet away from the door?
Absolutely. And our bench is placed.
Is that what you, oh, that's what you guys actually currently have a spot for them?
Mm-hmm. Our bench is placed away from the door, and there's a, there's a receptacle outside for that. Every morning and every shift change, somebody is out there because, you know, some people don't use the receptacle, and we're out there three times a day cleaning that up.
What if there were a nicer place to smoke near your building that wasn't right outside the door?
Well, because of our building's limitations, we have none. The only other place we have to offer our customers to smoke is in the alley next to the trash.
No, I'm, I'm, what I'm asking you is about, like, you know, have you seen the parklet up the street from you there on the, on the bridge that has the benches that are seating out with the?
But isn't this part of the plan on this map where that parklet is not allowed to smoke in?
No, just a moment, you're not letting me finish. I'm saying, we could look at some alternatives that might be better than what you're, what you currently have, that would be as convenient, not make you go a block away, but be something like right outside Mick and Moms in that part of town, that would be a nice spot to sit and smoke a cigarette is what I'm, that was my suggestion, is not, to not have it doing. I'm saying, you know, is there a way that we could do it and make it better than it currently is, and, and make it still agreeable to everybody?
It, you know, if you could make it better, I would be so appreciative, but the way it sits right now, you're damaging our business and my livelihood. And there are 40, 40 other bartenders in these three bars, their lives are being affected by it, the business owners are being affected by it, and that doesn't help with business growth in our small community.
And there is a worry that late at night, you really want people traveling with or without a cigarette, and they're trying to find their way back.
Whoa, wait. One at a time, and she's up there. Samantha?
Yes, sir.
How much of a, how much of a real burden, it's inconvenient, I mean, it's, the building is a straight-through. If I were back, let's say, at the pool tables, or, it's almost easier to walk out the back than out the front.
Except out the back is where the gas is and where the garbage is. Everybody's garbage cans are in that alley. And that alley is a public thoroughfare. And on the other side of that is a parking lot, but you're not allowed to smoke in the parking lots.
Ah, okay. Hmm. Any other comments or thoughts for Sam this afternoon? I'm a patron, I go down there and drink coffee most of the mornings.
Again, I, I actually am not a, a personal fan of taking away personal rights of any kind, so.
Neither am I.
But I, I also think that there might be, as a, somebody who's smoked for a long time and actually likes the smell of cigarette smoke.
I don't like.
I do. I was, you know, it doesn't, as a smoker, it doesn't look like a very comfortable spot to, to walk outside and smoke, particularly at Rumors where there's not even anywhere to sit down outside in the front. So, it's like, okay, let's, let's try and, I mean, my thought is, let's try and come up with a, a better thing that would work for everybody, you know? And try and come together and, and make it good instead of trying to fight each other about it, is, was my, was my thought.
Absolutely, I'm in agreement with that. And if we could make it better and not damage businesses, fine, but I don't, I don't think it's okay to take away personal rights or to damage our downtown community, which everybody's been working so hard to build businesses downtown and to bring more businesses. I don't think making restrictions like that is a good way to do that.
Great.
Do, Sam, one other question.
Sure.
Do, as far as you know, do any of the, of the, any of the bar owners belong to this Friends of Old Town Stateon, I think that's what it was called?
No, sir. They've only been visited a couple times, and most of the time it was to buy lettering to put up on our windows, or no big plans, or they've never tried to get Yi involved that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Thoughts, comments? Okay, Sam?
I did want to say, Sam, I, as a member of, as a, one of the founding members of FOTS, I've talked to the owner of your bar several times, way before any letters were any put up. They took part in last year in the Howl at the Moon event. We have talked, the Friends of Old Town Stateon have talked many, many times to the bar owners there.
Actually, actually, I was the one that they talked to about the buttons and supporting that.
Right, I talked to you.
Absolutely.
Right, but I also talked to the owner of the bar.
Well, I wasn't there for that, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make a correction that nobody had talked to the owners of the bar from that organization.
Okay, but you know, I honestly think that it would be great if the business owners were brought in and let to know about agendas and, and things like this. Absolutely.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Thank you so much for hearing.
Okay. James McGrawry, James? Where's he at? There he is.
Can I say something else, just real quick, real quick here, Mary? Only because it might be beneficial.
My name is James McGrawry.
Just a moment, that might be beneficial. Right, right now, there's a meeting going on at the library with this group and with interested community members. If, when you leave here, you'd like to go over, and that would be.
Okay.
James? Go ahead.
My name is James McGrawry, and I'm in total support of Samantha. This is, I don't know how you all come up with this idea in the first place, infringing on our rights to be Americans, to do what we do freely within the law. We follow the law, we smoke away from the door, we're out now to cigarette. What's the big deal? I know half of you guys personally, but this is absolutely ridiculous, ridiculous. I'm asking you to revote this, give us our rights to be ourselves. You choose not to smoke? That's great. We choose to smoke. We try to do it in the proper places, but closing downtown, that's crazy. Oh, it's a god. We're not doing anything wrong. We're not doing anything wrong, and why should we be taking this trade on stuff? I want you to hear exactly what Samantha says. Please, I'm begging you, rescind this ordinance. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Michael Os. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Actually, mine is on the land use thing, so if you could, I'd like to wait until then.
Would you like to wait? Okay, all right. All right. James Loftus, are you still here?
Here. You want him?
Not really, but yeah.
I have a question.
Sorry.
You want to get in?
I am the soul of consideration, so that was ill spoken.
Mr. Loftus?
Thank you. You have my brief.
Oh. Mr. Mayor, Counsel.
Thank you very much for having me up here. It's one of the few opportunities that I actually have something positive to say.
That's good.
So, I'm going to start off with, thank you for taking the time to hear what I have to say. Our museum is sponsoring Norman Chaffee to come back to Oregon as part of our Rural Schools Education Initiative. Let me back up. James Loftus, 633 North Third Avenue, Gardner House Cafe and Bed and Breakfast, as well as jplmuseum.org. The hospital has graciously given us their auditorium for October 15th, so any citizen that would like to meet a legend from NASA, they'll be there at 7:00 to 8:00 PM on October 15th. Ten Barrel Brewing has given us two kegs of beer, and Wolfgang's agreed to sell it. So, if you like beer, go to Wolfgang, buy a beer on behalf of the museum, that money goes to help sponsor us. Stateon Ford has given us a minivan, so we can travel over 1,400 miles in 14 days to cover over 2,200 high school students. But I want to go back to last year. Last year, we, we sponsored the Stateon Turner Almsville team to go on a private tour of Space Center Houston with Norm Chaffee, and he is considered the father of robotics. And so, these kids were down there for the first international world championship of robotics. And it turned out that two other classes canceled. So, these five kids had Norm Chaffee for five and a half hours on their own, right here from Stateon, Almsville, and Turner. And I am so proud of that because of the results of that meeting. It led to us then sponsoring, last July, nine students from Oregon that got to participate in the International Space Design Settlement Competition. So, we, in the last week of school, were given the task to assemble a team to put down in Titusville, Florida, where they got to compete with children from all over the world. And it turns out, this young man from Umatilla was put on the Australian team, and the Australian team took second. But it's changed his life dramatically because now he has contacts all over the world. He has mentors, astronauts, that are now communicating directly with him. I am proud tonight to show you that I am wearing this shirt. This was given to me by the Director of Operations of Mission Control in Pendleton, Oregon, at the UAS Mission Control Facility, which is the Unmanned Aerial Systems Division. They are testing for Yamaha, for Aerobus. For Aerobus, it's the first unmanned commercial aircraft that will be a passenger vehicle with no pilot. I want you to think about that. We're heading into history that is changing how our kids learn, what they learn. I have made an application, our organization has made an application for a community grant. We are seeking sponsorship. Pendleton was able to provide air transportation for Norm Chaffee and the rest of the folks that were on the educational tour. The county of Umatilla donated over $2,000. The community came behind us to help us. So, this year, in Ashland, Medford, Lakeview, Calamuth Falls, Lapine, Chiliquin, North Bend, Regis, Stateon, I'm hoping that maybe, I've got like a two-hour block, I might be able to give Cascade, but otherwise, we've been now asked by a homeschooling group that meets on Tuesdays and Fridays. They have roughly 40 kids, and we're going to go visit them. So, I'm asking for your help. We're a community organization, we're much like the library, much like the San Yum Canyon rodeo that we have. So, we've been here for three years, this is what we've done. I've been accused of not being a museum. I, I articulate it as a micro-museum, and if you haven't been in recently, Phil, who was number 174 of the Project Mercury chimps, was recently donated to our museum. So, I have his skull on display, as well as pictures and photographs of Holloman Air Force Base, as well as some other great stories that I can share with you. Thank you very much for your time. I hope you consider our grant.
All right. Thank you, James. Okay. Does anyone else feel the need to say something at this point before we take off on our regular agenda? Anyone? David?
Dave Nielsen, 2069 Cardinal Avenue. The Slurry Seal project seemed to turn out pretty good today after I thought it was not going to be at the beginning when the contractor didn't show up till about noon. But I think it's a really good job to be proactive in getting street maintenance done ahead of time until it falls apart. The only, like, the only issue I had was them showing up kind of late, which really didn't seem to give it a lot of time to cure. You know, like, my neighbor came home, turned his wheels back into his driveway and dug it up. But other than that, I think it's, those types of projects are great for the streets in Stateon. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, David. Anyone else? Once, twice, three times, here we go then on a consent agenda. It's June 25th, City Council Minute, Special Session Minutes, July 2nd, 2 at 2018 City Council Minutes, and the Star Cinema Lease Agreement Renewal. So, what would you folks like to do with, with that consent agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll offer a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll second.
All right, a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as admitted, as submitted. And there's no discussion on this? Would all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign? I guess 3-0. Okay, good. And we start off at almost 7:30 with a public hearing, and I need to read this before we It's Ordinance Number 1022, Amending State and City Comprehensive Plan Map and State and Official Zoning Map to Reduce the Number of Non-Conforming Single Family Dwellings. And this is the script. Good evening, my name's Henry Porter. As mayor, I'll be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of Land Use File Number 5-04/18, Concerning Legislative Amendments to the Comprehensive Plan Map and Official Zoning Map. Hearing's now open. At the back counter is the agenda for this evening's hearing, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the hearing, copies of the proposed map amendments, the city's rules of procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this, at this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice for this hearing. And I hear none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. And again, I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any members of this body? And I hear none. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and address for the record. As a participant in the hearing, the city is required to notify of the final results of the process. We are now ready for the staff report. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Fleishman?
Members of the council and members of the audience. The issue before you tonight is a public hearing on legislative amendments to the Comprehensive Plan Map and the Official Zoning Map. These are amendments that were initiated by the Planning Commission. You may recall, a few months ago, I think it was October or November, you enacted an ordinance that made some text amendments to the Land Use and Development Code regarding the treatment of single-family homes that were non-conforming uses, to allow an addition onto the home so that that would not be considered expanding the use. When the Planning Commission was informed that that amendment that they had initiated had been enacted by the council, they said, well, why don't we look at this issue further and try to reduce the number of non-conforming uses? And what you have before you tonight is Ordinance 1022, is the culmination of their work. There are currently somewhere between 90 and 100 single-family dwellings in the city that are located in the various commercial or industrial zones, and as such, they are legally existing non-conforming uses. Presumably, they were there before we had zoning, and the city developed a zoning ordinance, divided the city into different zones, and in these commercial and industrial zones, even though there were houses, single-family dwellings are not permitted uses. The code allows them to continue, but their expansion is limited, and these amendments have been initiated to try to reduce the number of people who are affected by being a non-conforming use. This map, while doesn't, it looks a lot better on the computer screen than it does the big screen here, but this, this map shows in, in blue or green or whatever color that is, the, the, the single-family dwellings that are non-conforming uses throughout the city. The Planning Commission identified three areas for proposed changes in the Comprehensive Plan Map and the Zoning Map in order to decrease the number of non-conforming uses, and focused on these three areas. The area around North Second and North Third Ave, north of Stateon Elementary School and the school district's administrative offices, the, a neighbor, what I'll call a neighborhood, on West Washington Street and North Burj Ave, to the west of the Stateon Plaza, and an area along the west end of West Washington and along North Oak, North Noble and, what's the last street there? So, to, to focus a little bit in more detail on each of these three neighborhoods, on the North Second and North Third Ave, here's just a, a blow-up of that map, again, showing the existing single-family homes that are non-conforming uses and the current zoning. That, that whole area along Second and Third, and the east, the west side, rather, of North Third Ave is zone commercial general today. Here's the excerpt from the current zoning for that area. The Planning Commission has proposed changing the Comprehensive Plan Map designation for the area that's cross-hatched in red, from commercial to residential. the area that's cross-hatched in red, from commercial to residential. It includes that, pretty much that whole area, but does not include the two existing commercial uses on North Second. At the corner of Cedar and North Second is the warehouse for Staton Animal Supply, and at the corner of North Second and East Hollister is the Staton Veterinary Hospital Clinic Building. So, those two properties would stay in the commercial zone. This map shows the proposed zone map amendment. The previous map was the Comprehensive Plan, and the Planning Commission has proposed changing the zoning from commercial general to medium-density residential, which is what the zoning is for the area on the east side of Third Avenue. Third Avenue is mistakenly labeled North Burj Ave in this, but it is not North Birch, it is North Third. I should say, at the Planning Commission's public hearing, there was only testimony in favor of this change in this area. In the North Burj Ave, West Washington Street area, again, here's a blow-up of that original map, showing the existing nonconforming single-family homes, as well as the current zoning. An excerpt from the current zoning map. The Planning Commission originally proposed to change the zoning, the Comprehensive Plan designation, again, for this area with the red crosshatch. The proposed change that they originally proposed was from commercial to residential designation. And they proposed that the area in the red would go into low-density, that's colored yellow, the colored purple would go into medium-density. There was testimony at their public hearing from several property owners, and actually, following their public hearing, the Planning Commission requested that I specifically contact the owners of two properties that are currently in commercial use to make sure that they didn't have any objections. And following the public hearing, the Planning Commission changed their recommendation, and what is now recommended to you is different than the original proposal, reflecting the desires of the property owners who came in and testified at the public hearing, to stay in commercial zoning. So, the recommendation that the Planning Commission has forwarded to you is that the change not affect the properties on the north side of West Washington Street. There is in your packet a letter from the owner of the four residential properties on the east side of North Burj Ave, saying that he would prefer that it stay in commercial zoning. That testimony was not provided in time for the Planning Commission's proceedings. I got a phone call from him Tuesday or Wednesday of last week.
Dan?
Yes?
Excuse me, Dan, that, those properties are right behind Staton Plaza, if I'm not right?
Correct.
In the blue?
Correct.
Blue there. Okay. All right.
So, again, here's the map showing the proposed change for zoning as proposed by the Planning Commission.
He would have received a mailing for the initial public hearing.
He, a mailing was sent to all of the property owners. I think, as he explained in his letter that's in your packet, he had family things going on and didn't see it. And then, though not required to, I sent a notice out to everybody who received the original notice of tonight's public hearing. And that spurred him getting in touch. Moving on to the third area of Myrtle Noble Oak and West Washington, again, here's detail showing the existing zoning and the existing single-family homes. Again, the current zoning, the north side of West Washington is zoned industrial. The area at the north end of North Myrtle and the west side of Noble and along Oak is all zoned commercial general. The Planning Commission's original proposal was to change the Comprehensive Plan designation for the properties on the north side of West Washington from industrial to residential, and the area shown in blue here, from commercial to residential. And their proposed zoning would have put the north side of West Washington, the north side of, the north end of Myrtle and Noble into low-density residential, and the south portion of the block between Myrtle and Oak into medium-density residential, pretty much just reflecting the lot sizes of the existing lots. However, again, there was testimony at the Planning Commission's public hearing. There was a letter submitted from all of the owners of property on the north side of West Washington, saying, "Please don't change the zoning. They'd rather stay in industrial. There's enough industrial use surrounding them that they just don't feel there's a market for their property as residential property." And so, as a result of that letter, the Planning Commission deleted that from their recommendation that's been forwarded to you. Again, here's showing the proposed zoning change to put the north end of the block between Myrtle and Noble into low-density, and the south end of the block between Myrtle and Oak into medium-density residential. So, that's my presentation. The recommenda, so, you've got in your packet, as I mentioned, the letter from the owners of, the owner of the properties on the east side of North Burj Ave. There's also a letter in your packet from the owner of a parcel on North Noble. And so, the recommendation from staff is that the ordinance be amended to not change the zoning of those properties that the owners have come in and said, "Please don't change the zoning." The owner of the property on North Burj Ave is the same individual who owns the Staton Plaza. He said he bought those properties for future expansion of the Plaza, and would like to keep them that way. The owners of the property on Noble say they may want to do commercial use at some point in the future as well. So, I have provided to you a suggested motion that would make changes to the ordinance as presented to you. There might be testimony from others at this public hearing that causes you to make further changes in the ordinance.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dan, for now.
I'll be back.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the council at this point? Anything? Proponents' testimony, those kind of in favor of all this? How about opponents? Those having a sort of different, let's call it a different view of this? And we've got a letter from Mr. Ous. He was, Mike, go ahead with this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Alfred Michael Oz. I go by Michael, my middle name. Live at 1462 North Second. I submitted a letter to you. I also have a handout of some pictures.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and council people, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. I did not have the opportunity to talk to the Planning Commission. I do not remember receiving the notice, so I did not know at the time that this was going to be coming up for them. The area that I'd like to talk about is the part on Second and Third Avenue, and the, your title says that you're trying to reduce the number of nonconforming single dwellings. However, if you make this change by moving this area into medium-density, you're going to be having 30-some-odd lots that are, again, nonconforming because they are too small. Majority of the lots in this area are 5,000 square feet, which is well under the 7,000 required for medium-density. The medium-density zone also requires setbacks that none of these can make, can meet. My particular home could meet the front setback, however, on the first picture, this is the back alley between Pine and Fur and between Second and Third. That is, the white garage is mine. My neighbor is on the other side, and the medium-density zoning requires a 15-foot setback. I'm built up within about a foot and a half, two feet of that alleyway. So is my neighbor. You can see right there, if something were to happen where the garages were to burn down under the medium-density zoning, we would not be able to replace them. If you look at the second page, this is the front of the house, just down the block from me, and it is supposed to have a 20-foot setback under the medium-density zoning, and it also is maybe five to 10 feet. And if that were to burn down under the medium-density zoning, they would not be able to replace it. Third page shows my neighbor Becky Peterson's home. It's right next to my mother's house, and she is actually built within 18 inches of the property line. And under medium-density zoning, she would not be able to rebuild, although she, I understand, does have a letter from the city saying that if it were to burn down, that she could. Well, that's fine, but the majority of us don't have a letter from the city saying that. And then, the final picture is diagonal from my house, and my sister happens to own that property, and it is built right, again, about 18 inches from the property line. In looking at the zoning map, I counted 15 parcels that were under the 7,000 square-foot lot, minimum lot size. What I would prefer to see is a new designation, maybe called small lot or small density, that would recognize what we currently have, which are minimum of about 5,000 square feet and zero setbacks. And be residential. I have no problem moving to residential. I, most of the people in this area are either retired people, or single people like myself, or small families. And we have quite a mix. Most of us don't need a large lot to take care of. And so, I would respectfully ask that you amend the plan or send it back to the Planning Commission and have a new designation made for areas like this. And with that, I'll leave you. If there are any questions?
Mike, thank you for the letter and the pictures. Yeah. Thank you. It's a good presentation. Thank you. Any other opponents' testimony? Please? Tell us who you are, please.
Hi. My name's Mike Garland. I presently reside at 330, and I also own 340 West Washington Street. And I'm probably doing everything wrong here. I've never testified in front of city council before, but I would like to be excluded from the change and keep the commercial zoning. I retire in six years, and one of the appeals of that property was the commercial zoning. My garage/shop is 200 square feet bigger than my house, and I'm looking someday to hopefully start, you know, maybe a small woodworking business or something in that area. Nothing bigger than the true set. And that's all I came here to say. If there's a requirement, a letter, I once again apologize that I didn't send anything, please let me know, and I'll send a letter asking to be excluded.
Excuse me, is, does your property, does it, I don't know where it fronts, but is it, is on the edge of Third?
No, it's West Washington. Across the street is Birch Street. I'm right next to San Yamm Cleaners, and across from me is Stro's Photos.
Okay. Okay. Wrong, wrong end of town.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. Any questions? All right? We're taking notes. Okay. Anyone else? Please. Put it up there.
My name's Eric Ramirez. I live on Second Avenue, from Mike.
What's the number?
We need your address.
1455.
1455 Second.
Second Avenue.
Second. Okay. Go ahead.
Grew up there, lived there for 25 years, and just hoping to keep it like that forever. So, I mean, I plan on raising my kids there, and I have a shed that's close, where it's a, yeah, a little shed that's close to the alley, too, kind of like Mike's, that was built before we moved in. So, I mean, it's been there for a long time, so I'd rather let, be able, if something does happen to it, be able to redo it again, too. So, I'd rather leave it just like Mike said.
All right. Thank you. Dan, do we have a rough idea of the age of most of those homes in that area?
No. I mean, I don't want, I don't want to throw out a number that I make up, so.
Yeah, we don't, we don't do that.
I mean, that information is available, but I don't, I don't want to guess.
I know that my home was built in 1949. My mother's was built in the early 50s, and I believe that my neighbor on the north side was about the same period of time.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else on opponents? Anyone else? Here we go. Hi. Tell us who you are and where you live, please.
Well, I live in Almsville. I'm Karina Roland. My husband and I are the current owners of Dale's Autobody. And before I get started, if I may just ask one question for clarification. Did you receive a letter from Mrs. Rubel in regards to excluding a lot that is right on the corner, right off of Noble?
Yes. That's in the planning, that's in the city council's packet, and it is among the properties that if the suggested motion that I provided to the council is made and seconded, would be excluded.
Okay. Yes, please. We would like to request- We would like to request that it's excluded. We are not current legal owners of the real estate, although we are the legal owners of the business. But in the contract that we signed when we bought the business was that after four years, we would have the option to purchase that lot directly behind Dale's Auto Body so that we can expand the business, which, of course, if the zoning changes, then that would not be realistic. So we're asking, and again, we didn't get the letter because we're not the owner of the property, just the business, but we would ask that it would be excluded.
All right. And that's duly noted, right, Dan?
It is, but Mrs. Rowland, we need your mailing address because we are obligated to send you a notice once a decision is made.
Okay. I can give it to you now?
That would be wonderful.
P.O. Box 1213, Almsville, 97325.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Opportunities abound here, so jump in if you've got something to say. All right, let's go to government agencies. Any of them affected by any of this? ODOT isn't planning a major freeway through any of this area?
Not that I've been informed of.
Okay, all right. General testimony, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for hearing my testimony. My name is Suzette Boudreau. I'm a real estate broker with Berkshire Hathaway. I live up the Little North Fork. If you need my address, I'm happy to give it. But I do, 11143 Dogwood Circle, southeast. We do not receive mail at our physical address. That is Post Office Box 2, Lyons. Representing a lot of buyers in the area and sellers for properties that are non-conforming becomes fairly difficult because mortgage lenders and appraisers have, do not like the non-conforming. They always, always have to have a burn letter, and it becomes very difficult for these properties that have been residential, used residential, and are still residential within the community that really need to be zoned as what they are. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
So, I miss things once in a while.
I talk fast.
Well, not even that. What would you do with this ordinance?
Well, I would exclude the ones that are commercially zoned, that have commercial businesses in them, and that have requested as such. And it sounds like planning is doing that. But as far as like overlays for small lots, I'm not sure how that would work, you know, financially for the community at large. But I do think that the homes that are homes should be zoned as residential.
Okay. What do you think of this idea raised earlier about a special zone for these older, smaller neighborhoods?
Well, usually you have multiple types of zoning, low-density, medium-density, et cetera. And those rules have to apply to each zoning. I don't think there's probably enough of the smaller lots to necessarily make a zoning designation for it. But maybe there could be a small lot, non-designated, non-conforming possibility, where it's like if a community does have 20, 30, 40, 50, 60 lots that are under 5,000 square feet or just at 5,000 square feet, then maybe it makes sense to do something to change the setbacks a little bit on that because they are such smaller lots.
Okay, all right, good.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Suzanne.
Suzette.
Suzette, I'm sorry. And I know you.
Yes, we know each other.
Suzette, I just want to clarify. So, is what you're saying is if somebody's, say, that one of the gentlemen that spoke were to want to sell his house, and somebody wanted to get a loan on his house to buy it, would that be a problem because it's zoned commercial and not residential?
Yes, indeed. It would be a problem. Absolutely, it is a problem. A lot of lenders will not even consider loaning on a house that has a commercial zoning. They don't like the non-conforming. Even if they have a burn letter, sometimes you have to change mortgage companies, lenders, because they won't go with that non-conforming zoning.
That creates another, yeah, please. That creates another sort of interest on my part at least. How many of these homes are bought and sold?
Each one has to go through a process where they go to the city and confirm that they can get a burn letter, present that to the lender, in hopes that that lender will accept that letter. And then there's a question mark. Are they going to, are they going to appraise it as a highest and best use in terms of it being either residential or commercial? It strikes me that a lot of things happened here in the city that happened previous to all these zoning overlays and tensions for the city to kind of have a certain look and area for things. And so I think we have to recognize what is rather than what maybe we can put onto it, which is why I go back to what is residential should be zoned residential. And I understand the exceptions for commercial. It makes total sense. And those parties that have investments or options on properties that have to stay commercial, I think that makes perfect sense.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hazel, do you have anything to add back there?
I would say what she said, basically, that I'm on the Planning Commission, so my opinions are already there, right?
Ah, okay, sure, please.
Mike Garland, 330 West Washington, once more. I purchased my property one year ago. I had to have no letter, and I had several lenders wanting to lend me money. I had no problem whatsoever.
Was your conventional? Did you have 20% down?
Yes, I had more than 20% down.
That's a lot.
Oh, okay, okay. Last I could say, I'm not an expert, but I had no problem whatsoever.
If you had less than 20% down, EA or FHA, you would not. You'd have trouble.
And we have audience participation. This is good, thank you. Sit down, that's fine, thank you. Mr. Garland, are you kind of right next to Stro's?
I'm across the street from Stro's. I'm in the, where Emery and Sons Construction started.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. That's good. Questions, thoughts?
I do have a question of Dan. So if this were to be approved, and we were to allow everyone that has requested to be not affected by it, be not affected by it, like their property would remain, you would be able, when you retire, to have your business, and Dale's would be able to buy their, if a person isn't at this meeting and for some reason doesn't know about it, and finds out a year later that, next year, that what they thought was commercial is not, is there some way that I missed in here that would allow them to come back at that point and say, "Can I now be taken out of that process? Can I, can I be, I would like to be what I was before because I had plans for this, but I somehow missed the meeting?" Is there some way to allow, I guess, people at a later date to get the same sort of consideration that the people who are here right now get?
Interesting.
Yes and no. So, the yes part is that any property owner, at any time, can come to the city and apply for a comprehensive plan map and zoning map amendment. The no part is that this process is a legislative process. And therefore, there are not really criteria that you need to find are met. Because this is the city looking at a number of properties throughout the city and making a policy decision. Should Mr. Garland's next-door neighbor, who didn't open his mail or was busy tonight, and as you said, a year from now, want to open up business, and he's told, "Sorry, you're in the residential zone," he or she would have the opportunity to apply, but there are standards, and it would become a, what we call quasi-judicial process. And they, as the applicant, have the responsibility or burden of showing that those criteria for approval are necessary. So that's the yes and the no. So the opportunity would be there and is there today. On West Washington, there is property that several years ago, the owner came in and applied for a comprehensive plan map and zoning map amendment from commercial to residential. And there's a new house that was recently occupied and another one that is under construction on two lots that were subsequently partitioned after the zoning map was changed.
Dan, the person that waits, let's say, 10 years, still, same thing? I mean, he just couldn't get to meetings and...
Right, yes. I mean, again, that opportunity to apply for a zoning map amendment is available to anyone at any time.
Okay, good, thank you. We're under questions from the public, are there still? Yes, ma'am?
Suzette Boudreau, again. I just wanted to do a follow-up that I don't know the city code completely, but I'm just wondering if there is anything within it that could allow certain types of businesses to be run out of residential homes. And if that's the case, then there could be a whole category subset of that that says as long as you don't require parking for 10 or have an impact on the neighborhood, that you could indeed run some businesses, some certain types of businesses, accountant, tax, those kinds of things, out of a residential property, as a thought.
So, since this was the part of the agenda for questions from the public, I will assume that that was a question and answer it. And yes, there is provisions in the code for people to have businesses in their home. There are restrictions on the number of employees who are not residents of the home. There are restrictions on the hours of operation, you know, signage, et cetera, that are more restrictive than businesses operating in a business zone. Essentially, when you drive down the street, it looks like a residence. But it does, it does not, it allows a wide variety of businesses. It's, I'm flipping pages trying to find it. It lists a couple of types of businesses that are not, it actually says, "We do not restrict the type of businesses." And then the next paragraph is, "The following businesses are not permitted." And things like automobile repair garages and body shops and motorcycle shops are not permitted because they're loud, noisy, and make fumes. But anyway, so, there even, there are, and there are a number of home businesses throughout the city in residential zones.
All right, thank you, Dan. Questions from the council? Oh, there's more public, go ahead, please.
Hello, Jordan Orts, 885 East Virginia Street. So, in comment...
Wait, where do you live, please?
885 East Virginia Street.
885...
East Virginia Street.
East Virginia, ah, yes. Go ahead.
So, in comment to the lots that are 5,000 square feet, is it possible to make an exception for those in terms of setbacks because they are so small? I don't know if that is a thing.
So, there is no need, there is no need to make an exception for those lots because the code today has two different standards in it, and you've provided the segue for my closing remarks. And that is, in contradiction to the testimony that you heard tonight, the code does allow for non-conforming structures to be rebuilt.
Okay.
So if the zoning changes and the non-conforming use becomes a conforming use, but the structure becomes a non-conforming structure because it's too close to a property line or is too tall, the code specifically says that any non-conforming structure which is hereafter damaged or destroyed by fire or any cause other than the willful act of the owner or his agent may be restored or reconstructed within one year of the date of the damage or deconstruction, provided its non-conformity is not increased and it complies with the building codes. Secondly, the code says if you have a non-conforming structure, it may be altered or enlarged, provided the addition or alteration is no more non-conforming than the existing structure. So that if there is a house such as some of them that Mr. Ross provided illustrations of, that has a portion of the house today that is only 18 inches from the property line, the code today allows, without any exception required, for an addition to be put onto the rest of the house to come up to 18 inches from the property line. So I don't think that changing the zoning from commercial general to medium density and creating conforming uses but non-conforming structures will create any burden or hardship on the property owners or residents because of their desire to enlarge their houses or to replace a structure that burns down, falls down, or has a big tree crash on it. So, the code does go on to say that if the addition or alteration is within the required side or rear yard setbacks, the applicant shall present a written statement from the fire chief that the expansion will not cause a fire or safety hazard. But again, the code allows a non-conforming structure to be rebuilt and allows them to expand. So no exceptions are necessary because the lot is small. And the existing buildings might not meet the setbacks.
That's perfect, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Hazel?
Heidi Hazel, 198 Fern Ridge, Stateon. So I just want to, we just changed some of the non-conforming rebuilds for expansion. So right now, if the house is in a commercial zone, it's a residential, and it burns down, and they want to replace it, they can't expand now if it's still zoned commercial, or they can?
If the zoning stayed commercial and the house burned down, it could be replaced because the language that I read a minute or so ago dealt with non-conforming structures. And what we're dealing with today is a use that is non-conforming. We make, the code makes a distinction between non-conforming uses, a use that's not permitted in the zone, such as a single-family house in the commercial general zone. And what it says about non-conforming uses... And what it says about non-conforming uses, well, first of all, it says, "Any non-conforming structure, lot, use, or development legally existing back in, all the way back in 2007 may be continued but may not be extended, expanded, reconstructed, enlarged, or structurally altered except as specified as follows. Non-conforming developments and premises occupied by non-conforming uses may be repaired and maintained without restriction." Then there's the, the sectional non-conforming structures that I just read a minute ago. Then there's the sectional non-conforming uses. And it says, and again, so if the house burns down, the use is not discontinued unless you go away for five years and never come back. The use is there. If it's in the commercial zone, the setback requirements today in the commercial zone are zero. So all of the homes are conforming structures. It's the use that's a problem. And the code does not, until a few, until April, I guess that's when the code was amended. The codes, the code used to say, "A non-conforming use may not be extended into a different or greater area of the lot." So when people came in to me saying, "I live up on Second Ave. I want to put an addition on my house," the answer was, "No, you can't." But in April, we changed the code to say, "Except for single-family dwellings, a non-conforming use shall not be extended into a different or greater area of the lot. Single-family detached dwellings that are non-conforming uses may be enlarged as long as the dimensional requirements of the district in which they are located are met." And again, in the commercial and industrial zones, the setbacks are zero. So you could build, today, you could build right up to your property line because we have a zero-foot setback requirement. So if the code is, if the map is changed to put these into the residential zones, then we'll have a five-foot side yard setback. In the medium-density zone, a 15-foot setback. And in the low-density zone, a 20-foot setback. But again, you have to distinguish between the use being non-conforming and a structure being non-conforming.
Thank you. Uh, oh, yes. Paige, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Porter and Council. Um, my name is Paige Hook. I live at 2088 Quail Run Avenue. I just have a couple of questions. Um, I'm on the planning commission and I had a really hard time with this one because, um, you don't want to infringe on people's desires for their property. Um, and so I was one of them that wanted those business owners called, was really concerned about people knowing about this. Um, so I'm wondering how many properties, first off, are left once all these are excluded from tonight? Like, how many are going to be affected at this point after the exclusions tonight and the other ones?
I, I, I can't give you a number. Um, uh, but looking at the recommendation from the planning commission, if, if the council follows the recommendation from staff that was in their packet, there were four lots removed on North Birch and there was one lot removed on Oak or Noble. And, um, depends on what they do with the requests from tonight. So there was one lot owner up on North Second to said he wanted to be kept in commercial and there was the recommendation from Mr. Oz to, instead of putting into medium density, come up with a new zoning district. But still, again, it depends on how, where the council wants to go with the testimony they heard tonight. Oh, and Mr. Garland on, on West Washington. So there's, so there's two lots coming out.
Okay. And then, um, do they have to make a decision today to be within a timeframe or, like, does the council have to make a decision today on this?
No.
No.
The council does not need to make any decision ever on this.
Okay. And then...
Because, because again, this is a legislative matter, so they could just indefinitely postpone it or they could choose to, they could choose, they could make a decision to not make any change at all is another option.
Okay. And then, um, my last question is, are the addresses that will be affected available to, um, the public so that they could notify their neighbors, their friends of, I mean, because the maps are a little bit hard to read. They don't show you like the actual address that it is and, I mean, can people like knock on doors, call their neighbors to let them know about it? Because my fear is that people just don't know because just between the time that the planning commission had this to now, I mean, to have a, a response from residents like this, um, is, is kind of big because people usually just don't pay attention to this stuff that much. But this has had quite a bit of attention. So I'm just curious, is the, are the addresses, could they be available to the public?
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay. Thank you, Paige. Uh, let's go on to questions from the council. Unless, there a response there, Councilman?
Yeah. So what are the, the combined total of properties affected?
How many properties in total?
Are in those three zones?
It was, uh, I think about 80 properties that got the notices. Um, and then there was the planning commission's recommendation, so there's not 80 that are in your proposal.
I hear you.
And, and I may be off by three or four either way, but roughly 80.
Okay. Does that help? Does that help you? Okay. Uh, let's go to questions from the council, which we're kind of doing, but, uh, anything from anyone? If there are any, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing.
Staff summary, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Staff summary.
Yeah. Well, let's do a staff summary then, then I'll close the hearing. Thank you, Ryan.
Well, I already gave most of my summary, which was to address the, the non-conforming structure issue. So again, you, this, again, this is a legislative matter, so you don't, you do not need to make a decision ever, but you've got the recommendation from the planning commission as modified by the recommendation from staff that reflected the, the written testimony received in advance. Again, and that would be to, to delete the properties on the west, on, I'm sorry, east side of North Birch Ave, behind the Stateon Plaza, and to delete the property on Oak. And then you've got, um, the requests, the two requests from property owners this evening to not include their properties, uh, as well. I would, um, caution you in looking at the maps to not create too much of a checkerboard. So for instance, if you, you don't have in your packet, but if you recall the, the maps that I showed on the screen, the original proposal from the planning commission was to, to change the zoning of, of six properties on the north side of West Washington around North Birch. And when the owners of five of those six properties came in and said, "Please don't change," rather than just leaving one, one property that would be changed surrounded by others, the planning commission chose to exclude the whole north side of West Washington. So I, I don't think that would, um, I don't think that would impact much, but I would not leave a single property in a zone to be surrounded by others while you're excluding them. And I, I think, Mr. Gar, are you between the Stateon Cleaner and the new house, the two new houses?
No, he's down.
That the school district built?
He's on the other side.
I'm, I'm on the other side.
On, on the west side.
Yeah, it's on the west side of Sandy Amfins. You see the two blocks there shows two, two tax properties. It's actually one single property.
All right. Now I'm going to close the hearing if there's nothing else and we'll go to council deliberation. What do you folks want to do with this? There's some options that the planning commission has given us. One is approve the first, I'm filling time here while you think what you want to do. Approve the first consideration of ordinance 1022 and/or approve the ordinance with modifications or retain the maps unchanged, in which case there would be no motion necessary. So what would you folks like to do? And Dan, I think you've said this a couple of times, the, the council does not have to take any action tonight on this.
No.
Okay.
No, uh, right.
We're, we're giving it out if we want. What do you folks want to do?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I think this initial review of the comprehensive plan came when the, uh, I think the ball got started when there was a modification request for a non-conforming structure on Second Ave to where the gentleman wanted to build an addition to his property. Correct? We've addressed that. As you said, that was changed in April, the use. I'm sorry. Let me make sure that's correct. Not necessarily use, we changed the, we allowed for the expansion of the property to meet the request for the addition. I think that's where it started and that's how it got to the planning commission from that point. Given all the testimony you heard tonight and all the people, um, opposed to it, I don't really think that, I don't see a pressing need to do this tonight. That's just my take.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, those are my thoughts exactly. It just seems like there's a lot of people that want exemptions and, and as Paige shared tonight, I, I also share those concerns that there's people that maybe haven't seen it that are also going to want those exemptions.
Okay. All right. So holdoff is a suggestion?
That's my suggestion as well.
Okay. Thank you. What would you like to see happen here?
I'm, I'm torn, which means that, that I probably won't do anything, but I, I fully understand both sides, I think, is what the problem is, is I understand that people who currently have property there, bought it, thinking, understanding that that's what the zoning was, um, and regardless of what they want to do with it or not, that's what they bought and not wanting to change it. But I also understand the difficulty of people that are trying to buy homes and being in certain programs like VA funding and other things and not being, and it'd be more difficult for them because we don't have it zoned correctly. So again, I, I see both of those sides. So if there is some way that we could make sure that everybody that did want, uh, an exclusion was heard, uh, I would vote to, to, to make it easier for those people who, uh, sometimes don't have a voice and don't have the financial resources to get, to have 20% down to buy a home. And this is exactly the, the price range, those houses and this home is exactly in the price range that would be the homes that they could afford. And they, and they're being excluded from being able to buy them because we don't have it zoned residential. So I, I have a problem with that. I, so...
Is there any, like, records to show? How many applications have been denied?
I think that some people wouldn't even apply because they, it just wouldn't, they wouldn't even apply because it'd be just too difficult when they would look, have to look elsewhere or do something else.
Can I speak for the council and suggesting we are just going to sit on this? That's probably not fair after all that work, Dan. We're not sitting on it, but we're going to defer a decision. Is that better?
Well, I guess I, I was about to ask for clarification, particularly hearing Councilor Mullen's remarks of whether that was to defer a decision or to make a decision to not make any changes to the maps.
To defer.
So put this off till the next meeting or two meetings or, or when?
To defer.
I think it's important to have the full council make this determination as well, so...
We've got, we've got, yeah, almost half our group missing. Somebody suggest a date when we might pick this up again? I'm thinking September. Get through the summer season and get everyone back to work and...
I, I'm wondering what's going to change between now and September. I guess I'm, I'm wondering there, you know, unless we want to ask Dan to go knock on 80 doors and make sure that everybody is aware of it, I don't see that we're going to be in any different position at any other time unless we, I guess I just don't see a way to know that everybody has been, has had their day in court, so to speak. Uh, and so even though, again, we've had to make other hard decisions at times and I also don't know how we might find out, what you suggested, Brian, is how many people, uh, you know, could, could the real, realtors in town let us know how many people might have been able to buy homes in that area or tried to and been turned down or, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm wanting us, if we defer to make sure that when we come back, that we have more information, that, so that we maybe don't start exactly to the same, at the same spot and be having the very same conversation that we're having right now.
Okay.
So I, I just don't, don't know how we can get that information other than, like I said, maybe we, the realtors could somehow let us know about people that are applying for homes in those areas or what the, how many, do you get letters for, requests for letters, Dan, pretty regularly or?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't describe it as regularly. I would describe it as occasionally. Uh, I would say in the order of three to five a year, I get a request for the type of letter that Ms. Boudreaux was describing.
And when we're talking about 80 residences, that's actually pretty significant.
Who knows how many properties are bought and sold that I don't get a request for?
Yeah.
Um, so it probably depends on the resources the buyer brings and the type of financing they're, they're looking for. Um, so, um, and, and occasionally those, the letters, the requests I get are quite desperate because usually it's, you know, three or four days before closing is supposed to happen and the bank has come back and said, "No," or, you know, get us that information. So, you know, I could go back and, I keep copies of all those letters. I could go back and see how many, but off the top of my head, I'd, I'd say it's a handful a year.
Okay. I'm prepared to just defer it until, um, whatever time is...
What, what might happen, I suspect this very easily could happen since Mike House and I are on the Sandy Amfins Endowment Committee. And I suspect that he'll just call up one day and say, "Why don't you come down and let's walk through the neighborhood." I could do it on my own, but it'd be easier and more fun to go with him. Now let's just look at this area between the, um, school district property and, uh, basically Ace Hardware. And, uh, let's just walk around and look at some of this. Um, I don't know, it'd be fun for him and I probably, but I don't know if that'd do anything for anyone else. But, um...
Gus would probably have the best time.
We could get out and talk to people in these neighborhoods and get a, maybe a better picture of what the people that live there think of, of these changes. That's just a thought. So we're going to defer it? Yes. Let's go back, let's go back in September.
Do you want, do you want to pick a date to come, for this to be, appear back on the agenda?
Second meeting in September.
September 17th.
Is that all right? Is that all right? Somebody needs to make a decision. Okay, we're done with that. I thank all of you for being here tonight to sit in on this, and taking part. That's important. Okay. Is there any unfinished business? And I don't have an opening, a closing statement to make on this, because there was no decision.
Right.
So, new business? No unfinished business? No new business? Staff reports? We'll get on with this. Finance Department report, June monthly finance. Ta-dun, ta-dun. Where is it? There it is. I haven't said anything about those courtesy delinquent notices sent to landlords for a while, just to spare you folks. I haven't given up on it, but I just need to get the right questions. Haven't done that yet, so, I don't have a problem with this today. Uh, let's see, what's next? Anything from you folks? Police chief support. Chief?
Mayor and council, you have the statistical report for the month of June in front of you. The items are in line with what we, the standard numbers are usually where they're at, and, but I would like to let you know that August 7th is National Night Out. We will be having our, the officers in the four different parks again that we'd be having the past year. They'll be in Pioneer Park, Sandy Am Station Park, Eagle Park, and West Town Park. And the officers will be cooking hamburgers and hot dogs again, and we're asking that residents bring some sort of side dish, and come out and join us for a picnic in the park.
Chief, if, looking back at these night outs in the park, are they generally more successful each year? Is it a little better participation? What do you see happening?
Yes. Every year, they've been larger in numbers, until last year, when we had over 100-degree weather the night of the event, and leading up to it. And then, the numbers dwindled down quite a bit last year, but we believe that was because of the heat.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions or thoughts for Chief?
Go ahead, Brian.
Go ahead.
I'll take a pass. Okay. I was going to ask if you had your mobile food permit.
Jump in there. Mobile food permits. All right.
We do, the officers all do have food handlers permits for that night, though.
Fantastic. We'll leave it at that.
Not altogether innocuous. Somebody's towing one down Highway 213 this afternoon, heading towards Sublimity, and it burned up in Silverton. As it's being towed. Must have been exciting. Okay. Public Works, Lance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have, I have two pieces of information for you tonight. First will be the monthly operating report for June. I really don't have anything further to add to that. I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding that. And item number two is about the slurry seal contract that we started, we entered into a contract in May with Marion County. This is the first year that I know of that we've partnered with Marion County with our street maintenance. We saved up to 90 cents a square foot, which allowed us to slurry seal two subdivisions, rather than one this year. As Mr. Nielsen said, we did have a little bit of difficulties with scheduling. We were not supposed to have or slurry seal our streets until the end of July. However, Silverton dropped out of the program, so they moved us up. We had about three days' notice, so we did what we could. And they were supposed to show up Friday to do a couple streets, they did not show up. So they did it all today to get that done. We did what we could to make the residents aware of that. We had a couple of difficulties, but I think the streets are done, and I think they look fabulous, and we saved a bundle of money by doing this. So, as far as saving tax dollars, this is the way to go about it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Oh, let's see. Dan?
Thank you. You've got my usually boring monthly report, but I will note one item on it, and that is, we are starting to get ready for the 2020 Decennial Census. The Census Bureau has a program that they work with local communities who choose to participate to verify their address list. And so, we did that in the month of June, sent the files in, and we should be, you know, we added a bunch of addresses that they missed, deleted ones that didn't exist, or were, that they had down as residential but weren't, or whatever. So, it'll only be another 16 months or so till, 20 months or so, until census forms show up in everybody's mailboxes in April of 2020.
Dan, do you remember when the term gerrymander used to be this archaic political term that belonged in the early 19th century? And now is...
I've seen the original maps of Massachusetts districting that created that term.
But now that, that old dead thing has come back, and it's everywhere now.
It's, I don't know if it ever went away, but...
Let's redraw political districts to favor whoever draws. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Jana, Library Director?
Mayor and council, you have my report before you. I also would like to invite you guys to a music group that's coming on the 26th, the Paradise of Samoa musical group is coming, to perform for us, because this summer, summer reading thing is all about libraries, right?
Okay. Wonderful. A busy time at the library. Thank you. Let's see. Any other presentation, comments from the public, another possibility? David?
David Nielsen, 2069 Cardinal Avenue. It's been a long time since I've come to council meetings and sat through them, and this is probably one of the most informative and productive public hearings I've been to in a long time. There's a lot of information presented to you guys. I just have a concern about how you handled the end of it and moved it forward. It seems like you only deferred the decision. You had, there was two things that you didn't have to do tonight. One was make a decision. The other one was to close the public hearing. In my mind, you've got a lot of information that needed to be culled together by staff, and you also have, you know, suggested the opportunity for more people to step forward. It seems like the record's closed now. You closed the public hearing, and you closed the record. If you just would have made a motion to keep the public hearing open to a date certain, September 17th, that could have been the end tonight, and you just could have moved on and got more input from people. But it seems like now the record's closed, so how do people come forward about their properties? I'm not sure if the, if there is a procedure just to open it back up at that meeting or not, but that's something you should look into when you come back in September.
Okay. Well taken. Thank you. Okay. Business from the City Manager. Oh, did you have a comment?
I actually have a question of Rich. When I was looking at the statistics that was there, we had a rape in June, and I was just wondering, is there a way to know, tell the difference between stranger to stranger and familial, or?
We don't differentiate on the statistical report, but that is definitely part of the investigation, and it's not something that we would necessarily put out there. I would tell you that very rarely does it, is it ever a stranger.
That's why I was wondering.
In fact, I'm trying to think back in the almost 20 years that I've been here, I can think of only one that was possibly a stranger, that we just couldn't prove either way that it was not.
Okay. I was just wondering if there was one, a way to differentiate that to the community, if that case, if that ever came up, that that would, the community would be aware of that? So, the difference.
Good question.
All right. Business from the City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. To Mr. Nielsen's point, I do think if the council decided to take on more testimony, we could reopen the record. We'll confer with legal counsel if they decide that they want to just make the decision going forward, they can. So we can, we can make sure we're ready for that. It's a good question, and we can make sure we're ready to handle that. But I, I'm pretty confident, and I'm not an attorney, I'm just saying I'm pretty confident we can, we can make that work if we want to reopen their record.
Okay.
There's been a lot talked about the slurry seal. I want to thank Marion County, Lance talked about this, I want to thank Lance as well for his work on this. When we talk about this partnership, you know, Lance made a comment of what we save per square foot, but I'll put it in these terms, that have the cost that the city paid. So, if you see a county commissioner, or someone at the county, thank them. We're trying to have other partnerships, similarly, economies of scale at work, save on those mobilization costs. We're hoping these kind of successes lead to more opportunities to cooperate and work together. And I think the county, you know, when they see these successes, will be more receptive. And again, thanks to Lance for his work on making this partnership finally a reality. Another quick thing, we had someone come and talk about the community grants. Just to be clear, the community grant program is currently open to residents. There's information on our website. Contact me or Alyssa, we can get you that information. The applications are open through the 31st of July, and that will come back to the council on the September 17th meeting as well. And I see Mr. Mexico is out here. We recently just approved his lease on the consent agenda, so I just want to say thanks to him and his partnership with the city. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Keith. Yeah, and that was, I guess, my question, and I was going to ask if you, but you got ahead of me, and that's fine. How do we figure out a way to reopen this thing that, and there was no real intent to cut it off, it just, it just happened? I'm sorry, David. What else? I can't think of anything else right now. That's good, right now, because it's quarter to nine. Council, business? Anything? No? I'll ask our deputy city recorder to put it on the front of the agenda for next meeting to see if we can make this tropical shirt thing work. I'm making it work, but I'm kind of lonely. Future agenda items, Shaft Road water line, housing study follow-up, and thinking of Shaft Road, you know, we have tried very hard for the last several years to work with the county, and when, you know, when you talk about Shaft Road, you have to involve the county, because it's theirs. And it's been a real effort, and it's paying off with these road projects and street things that they're willing to get involved with, finally, and we work pretty hard at trying to get along with them. So, yeah. All right. Anything else? We're done. Good night.